He tried to go hard.
Yeah.
I would have took the one.
I like you boys talking. I like you boys talking.
My Darren, how do we want to go?
Okay, I'll give you a few minutes. Give me just a few minutes, we'll be done. You grab your phone, somebody will be calling soon. So, girl started six. Heard America, they'll sit there again. Watching the game in the bar. That's what I did at school.
Wayne already tried to give me his. He thought he was the only one that got it, but he didn't see everybody. I don't, everybody got one, that is upsetting. How does a student say a policy? Oh, okay, right there, right here by all three kids.
I wasn't good at art.
Well, if you fail at art, they say you can pick another, uh, piano or vocal musical channel where you can.
It's very, I'll be assigned everything later. You gotta send them all to Alice. I said, we're playing the last time. We got this kind. I said, we're back down to the dollar, and the ballgame, and then she sold it. Black cat, it's over. Did I come back on the show and stop the call?
Sorry, I was just. I didn't say Alice. Alice was laying back. I can see now, Alice.
There's going to be a test on pay for their employment. On the general purpose.
All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting the order. Uh, open in session prayer, be given by Wayne Taylor, flag of allegiance by Alice Reed.
Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, in heaven and in earth. We're thankful for all your blessings, we're thankful for help sufficient to be here this afternoon. We're ever grateful for Jesus and the sacrifice that he made for this world. We're thankful that he was willing to shed his innocent blood so that through him we can have the forgiveness of our sins and receive the promise of everlasting life. We're thankful for your word, the Bible, and we pray as we search that word we regain knowledge and we pray for the wisdom to apply. May we be steadfast, unmovable, and always abound in your word. If we're found faithful in the judgment, we ask for a home in heaven is our prayer in Christ now. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, approval of the minutes from the December thirteenth, twenty twenty two meeting, you all got that in your packet. Motion by James Klaus, second by Rick Dodson, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, any additions or deletions to proposed agenda?
I have a few. We need, uh, I think money finally got approved and awarded by the state for some of our grant stuff, which one of them is the innovative schools grant for this fiscal, and all these, these couple for this fiscal year. And then the STEM grant money that the state awarded that we discussed last month, that came through. I think there's also revision for CTE and the federal program called Perkins.
So we'll do number four, uh, innovative schools grant approval. Uh, number five, the STEM grant funding approval. And number six, the CTE Carl Perkins amendment. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there might be a more appropriate name for those STEM grants.
There are two different things.
Yeah, like I am, like part of education. And those was passed out this second ago.
Under consent, the CTE Perkins revision four, is that different, Crystal?
Correct.
Number three, under consent, the Carl Perkins revision four, is this a difference?
This is number five, yes. Yeah, and they just got that, uh, back from the state.
All right, so number four will be the innovative school grant, number five will be the STEM grant funding, and number six will be the CTE Carl Perkins amendment, number five. Any other additions or deletions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the additions.
Motion.
I'm sorry, uh, number six, I'll entertain a motion to approve the January tenth meeting. Motion by Alice Reed, second by Wayne Taylor, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, nothing under executive action. Under consent, consent agenda, we'll approve all these at once. Uh, number one, letters of resignation from the following, Amy Jolly and Samantha Clark, those are in your packets as well. Uh, fiscal year twenty-three, HESR two point oh, revision four, revision two. Fiscal year twenty-three, CTE Perkins, basic revision four. And number four, fiscal year twenty-three, general purpose schools revision two, uh, that was handed out as well a few moments ago. Do you entertain a motion to approve? Motion by Shirley Myers, second by James Klaus, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Uh, under new business, number one, consider approval of unsellable items for surplus sale. Uh, these items are two portable buildings which is behind reach. Uh, then there's, uh, three retired school buses that'll be, uh, up for auction. Uh, the buses are old, out of date buses, uh, that's out, so. Uh, Dr. Holman's got a list, a small list of just what I said, if anybody needs to see that and a copy of it, so.
When is the sale, instead of today?
We don't have it set. And if I'm not mistaken, we're, the policy says we're to have that sale at the end of the year, uh, but I thought we could go ahead, it would be nice to go ahead and get the ball rolling, and since these are especially portable, I'd like to get this, if it's all right with you all, go ahead and do it now. And here we go, you know, get the ball rolling on that, because that'll sure look better when we get that straightened out, and it'll be a safer place. And another thing, that's a good point, thank you, we didn't do one at the end of the year last year.
Entertain a motion to approve. Motion by James Klaus, second by Wayne Taylor, any discussion?
Is that all the items we've got?
That's all, that's all that I'm aware of at this point.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Uh, number two, consider approval to recycle materials from the old playground equipment located at H. Roberts due to the purchase of new playground equipment. Entertain a motion?
What do you mean by recycle?
So they'll take that and scrap it, and the funds will go back to their school.
Are they not good enough for another school too? I mean, are they long gone?
That's my understanding, yes, that's my understanding.
I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Ashley Carr, second by James Klaus, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. I'm sorry. Uh, number three, consider second reading of policy four point seven oh oh, testing programs. Uh, this was received last meeting, and we done the first reading there, so. Entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Shirley Myers, second by Rick Dodson, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number four, consider approval of the innovative schools grant. Motion by German Hicks, second by William Abston, any discussion?
Uh, just real quick, these, these numbers are from the state, they're, they're not open numbers, these are state numbers submitted by the department. They are what they are, it's just processed to go through. Any other discussion?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number five, uh, consider approval of the STEM grant funding. Motion by German Hicks, second by James Klaus, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Number six, consider, uh, CTE Carl Perkins amendment, number five. Motion by Ashley Carr. Second by Alice Reed, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Uh, then, uh, OCEA, Ms. Jennifer Hollis.
Hi there. Don't really have anything, just to report from the front lines, things seem to be going well, but I know a lot of kids that are really hoping for some snow, and maybe some teachers might be hoping a little bit, so y'all can do your snow dances for us, that'll, that'll be much wealth.
Thank you. All right, that's all for the meeting portion. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Motion by Rick Dodson, second by Mitch Thumbs, are there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Move straight into the work session. Everybody good going straight to the work session?
Yes.
All right, number one of the work session, update, uh, goal two of five-year strategic plan, and everybody has a copy of this.
Before you, Mr. Dr. Nibbins, before you start, if you all remember back when we were, uh, when we started this five-year plan, I said we would periodically, every once in a while, go over each one of the, uh, each one of the different goal. We've done the technology one with Mr. Thrasher, uh, and the next one was, uh, was, was Mr. Mosley and, uh, and the grounds, and, and now we're, now we're doing the special ed one with, with Dr. Nibbins. And let me say this, I can't say thank you enough for the good staff I've got, and Dr. Nibbins is really doing a good job, and I'm glad she's here tonight, thank you.
Well, thank you for letting me be here. Um, we serve five hundred and twenty-five students with disabilities across the district, and of course, as you know, we're required to follow, uh, federal and state laws and regulations, and the most comprehensive of those is the federal IDA law, which requires, um, all states to give an annual report on, um, how well each school district is complying with those laws. And you have in your packet, um, our latest report card. Up at the top, it says APR, that stands for annual performance report, Ms. Marjorie, please hear this on the TV. Stands for annual performance report. Also notice that it is for the year twenty-twenty. We'll receive twenty-twenty-one data in May of this year, so there's a little bit of lag to our data here. Also notice up at the top that, um, at the top right-hand corner, determination, we're in the needs intervention category, and we have not been where we want to be in recent years, so we've been setting some, uh, pretty, uh, aggressive goals and have been implementing those. Last year, we wrote a special education handbook that has all of our district policies and procedures, and we shared that with everyone in the district, so we would, the first of this year, so that we would all have a shared understanding of what was required of us. And, um, on our report card, over half of the points are connected with a high school, so we wrote a grant, and this school year, we were able to hire one brand-new special education teacher and two special education aides, and they're helping us serve our students there at the high school, so we're really happy about that. Uh, those are only a couple of things that we've done, but if you want more information or if you have suggestions, I'll definitely take on them. Um, I love, love this and love doing this, and just come by anytime, I could talk about it all day long. See you later.
I do, under the determination where it's got needs intervention, is that something you score locally, or does that come from the state?
Comes from the state. And it's based on all of these indicators, you'll see, uh, it explains it a little bit more, and I can go into more depth with you if you, if you ever have time.
Ms. Nibbins, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
You may not know the answer to this. Lee, uh, you mentioned a lag in the, that, so what causes that lag, or how do they, how does that measure some of it? Because I know, I know, uh, your T-CAP, that type of score's come back fairly quickly. So, do you know what the reason is for such a lag?
Well, there are just so many indicators on here, and here's, look at indicator three, that's our T-CAP data, so they would have that data, but if you look like it, indicator seven and fourteen, those are surveys that are sent out, and so it's very time-consuming, and, uh, it takes a lot of time for the state to send out those surveys to, it's people in our community who have, uh, small children and who have children who have just graduated, so it takes so much time to get all that data back, that's one of the reasons for the data, for the, for the lag in the data.
It's a, it's a more lengthy process, which takes more time.
It is, there's so many different moving parts in these indicators here.
Thank you.
I'd like to say that these indicators and this report card is so complex, and, I mean, I'll say it one more time, it is so complex, and, and I really appreciate the fact that Dr. Nibbins is, is, uh, so detail-oriented, uh, and this, this goes right down to the school flow, you know, of what happens at the school is, is, is how we have this, is how we've got this data. And, and something that I've talked about for a couple of years now is, we need to have good, clear expectations, expectation, and then I, I really was appreciative, and I love the fact that she developed that, that handbook to go out at the beginning of the year, and it can be edited, just like a school handbook can, and that way, the teachers clearly know what's expected. I mean, you, you can't hold someone accountable to something if, if they don't know what's expected. I, I firmly, firmly believe that, whether it be a child, a teacher, a supervisor, anybody, but everything, Ms. Dr. Nibbins is trying to make everything just as clear as she can, and, and this is so detailed, I, I just really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Well, and, and I will say, I may be wrong about this, your friend, this is the first time that this has been presented to the board since I've been on the board, and it, it's very useful, it helps us figure one direction, we try to go.
I'm, Ms. Nibbins, I'm going to try to go over one little example, and if I mess it up, you correct me, okay? But my, one, one example of this would be, they come in and they, they select a certain number of IEPs, and they may, they may select IEPs, you know, five at Richmond and four at Hillholland, and ten at the high school, for instance, they look at those IEPs, and they see if, if every little criteria, if every little T is crossed and every I is dotted, so to speak, and if there's any, if there's anything not exactly right, we get, we get negative point, we get these points off, and the more points that we accrue, the more points that we accrue because we've done something not exactly right, that helps to determine how we are audited.
Yes, sir.
That determines how we're audited. We've been audited quite thoroughly ever since I've been here, you know, so we're in hopes that we are in the, uh, decrease of accrual stage, you know, we don't want to accrue any more points. Uh, we, we want to, we want to be doing such a good job that they don't feel like they have the need of being here to, but, I mean, they're going to audit everybody, but they can audit you very, very thoroughly, or they can audit you less thoroughly, and we're ready for a less audit.
Yes, sir.
And I think, I think we're headed in that direction, so, thank you, Ms. Nibbins.
Moving on, uh, credit recovery update, uh, Crystal, you emailed that out to everybody, lay plus the copies, uh, in your packet tonight, uh, this is coming off the policy that we approved, uh, where it's stated that the board will review this, uh, from time to time, so I think Dr. Holman's going to go over a few things, uh, for this, that way in the future when we get the report, uh, then we'll know what we're looking at and we'll review it.
What I have in mind, well, this is going to be a quarterly report, uh, quarterly, and what I have in mind is, going forward, uh, every three months, we will, we will just give you, we will send you the report, so that you can study over it, look over it, and if you have any questions, always you can ask me, you can ask, uh, any of us, always, uh, but this time, I thought I would try to go over a few things with you, uh, when you're looking at this, and then, once again, this is extremely, extremely detailed, and, and I want a little backup, so I asked Ms. Trent, who, who deals with this all the time, I asked her to be here tonight, takes any of you all not have a, have a question that, that I wasn't familiar with, but, but let me say just a word or two about that. This is something that we are always looking at, uh, I've learned a lot about this in the, in the last two years. Ms. Trent, uh, has notes on everything, everything, uh, and, and I've, I've seen this, and I've observed it, uh, and then, and then we get all those notes of hers converted over into spreadsheets and so forth, so, uh, this is something that we acquire every marking period. Of course, I, I want to, I want to go on record as saying this one sentence, we do not want anyone, any of our students to fail, by all means, we don't want any of our students to do that, but if they do, that's why we have this policy, so that we can recover those credits, help the students to recover those credits. And, and if, if some of you have noticed that, not just any student though can, can, can recover the credits, it's only the students that score a fifty, have a, in that class have a fifty or above, well, what they're thinking is, if a student has fifty, they've at least gained fifty percent of the content, so only the students that have a fifty or above are qualified for that. And then, how do they recover those credits? I, I know many of you already know this, and this is a repeat, but I, I still want to go over it, it will take but a second. First of all, we have what they, what, when I come up First of all, we had what they, what, when I came up here a couple of years ago, the, the high school was talking about DECR, DECR, DECR. I'd never heard of a DECR in my entire life. But that's D-E-C-R, Dual Enrollment Credit Recovery. It took me a week or two, but I finally got through and figured out what they were talking about. In elementary schools, we didn't do that. So the, the DECR lab, Dual Enrollment Credit Recovery. So a child, if they, a child that has the right score, that's one option. So that was to go to the DECR lab at the high school. Another option is, they can be worked with at our after-school program at the high schools. That would be a lot through our edgenuity program and, so that's another option. Our last option, which I think overall is, well, last year, I think was, was very successful, was the summer school program, which is like a two-week program. But now students can only recover so much in a two-week period of time. And you can't go to, for two weeks and make that 10 credits. I think it's only two, is that right?
They usually can't get more than two.
Yeah. Time-wise, if a student goes for the two weeks and works the whole time, all two weeks, they can only make that two credits. And that's going, that's working on it all day long, all day long. So that's the ways that we do the credit recovery. If any of you looked over any of this, let, let me, another thing. I want to take credit for this, by all means. I should have sent this information out to you earlier, but I didn't. So I, I wish that I, I wish that I had sent this out to you a week and a half, two weeks ago, so that you could have studied over these pages. And then you might have had some more questions, and I regret that. But that's, that's my fault.
Well, to be honest, Dr. Holman, it probably wouldn't have been ready. Because what happens at the marking period, that 12 on 12/19, there are some students that might still have something left to turn in. So that semester, it's not closed out yet. So to really give our full failure report, we did not run it. And we only ran it like last week, so.
Well, good save. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You would have had it, so.
But anyway, I, I just wanted you to know who qualifies, what the process is, and, and the three ways that they can do this. And, and I want you to go home remembering that we don't want any of our students to fail. But if they do, we're trying to, we're trying to get them caught up. We don't, we're trying to get them caught up. And, and I apologize once again for not having this out to you earlier. But I, I've looked over this, the last page here, the last page that says at the top, "Course subjects failed this semester by grade level." I, I looked over that quite a bit. And I sure understand that so much better now than I did prior to, the, the two years ago. And in all honesty, it looks like we've made a, a big improvement this year from last year. I know last year, me being newer even, I was very alarmed when I saw the students that were failing. This year, when I look at this, I don't like it if there's one child fails. I don't like it. But this has much been, I mean, we've made improvement from last year, I think, which I'm very thankful about.
Dr. Holman, do you have any, can you compare this to pre-pandemic results? And, and can you, can you say specifically that pandemic impacted this? And I know this is a moving target. This, what we're seeing on, on this paper is not what it will be at the end of the year. Sure, that has, you know, but do we know if pandemic was a result of some of this?
I think, I think so, yes. But I do think that, as he was saying, with last year's, you know, at, at some of the marking periods, I think the pages would have been longer. So, you know, now I think that students are beginning to kind of get back on track of what we're seeing at the high school level. So what I have noticed, the big difference is, so if you notice like a class that's a year long, so we'll say that, when you're looking at a class that would be Algebra I, and we're saying that, you know, there were, there were 28 students that were failing, some of those students were failing by one point. So we know it's a year-long class. So at the end, we will not have 28 failures. But they were so close to passing. So it, it might look like, oh, 28 out of 200 and, and something students. But it's very possible there won't be that many. So in the past, I've seen numbers that were below what we thought we could have ended up with 28. But these are higher, much higher.
And I think what Ms. Trent is saying is, that student that made the, well, it'd be 59 now. I started to say 69. But the student that makes the 59 just a point away, they've got to have the year to get that brought up. Because it's a year-long class.
Yes. And the teachers as well. So when you see these numbers and, and we talk about it, one of the things that we do in guidance is, you know, we will go to those teachers and we do an at-risk list, obviously. And, and they let us know quickly. They can let us know within two to three weeks, like concerns they have. If someone needs to be moved to a smaller class setting or what we need to do. But when we go to them and talk about this and you just look at, at this information on paper, you know, they can tell me, no, that student will be fine as long as they continue at the pace that, you know, they're working at. They, they miss a few days, and when you miss, you get behind. So they're going to be back on track. And then we meet with them in guidance and say, okay, your teacher says that you may be at a 59, but you can pull this off at the end, end of the year. You know, if you may have missed a couple of days or you may have, you know, something, you know, got you off track. And they, it, it's, it works really well when you talk with the teachers. You get a better understanding of what, what this looks like.
Ms. Trent? I'm, I'm going to take one more minute and we can talk for just a minute about unit recovery. That's done some, but not a, not a great, great law, but it is an option.
It is an option.
I'm going to try to explain that and you build on that if I, if I may say. This is another thing that I've learned about that I'm very impressed with. And which I know, Mr. Stones, I know we didn't really answer your question. I'll come back to it. But I wanted to tell you while I got to your, about what unit recovery is. You can have a student in a class and they will say, done pretty good. But then there's one particular unit, like Chapter Five in Algebra or Chapter, a, a certain chapter. Think of it in a chapter. They fail that one chapter, in other words, that one unit. The teacher has the option of contacting someone at the high school that they give guidance to have them to redo that one unit.
Yes.
Because that one unit is bringing them way down. They failed that unit and didn't get it. So they can contact the guidance and Ms. Livingston at, at the high school and have that. If that teacher wants to do that as an option, and that, that child can make that unit up to help them get caught up prior to it, at the end of the semester failing. How did I do on that?
That's perfect.
So that's a wonderful thing. Certain teachers take more advantage of that than others. But that's a wonderful option that we have out there. Because you, there's certain areas and certain subjects that a lot of us aren't good in. I can tell you several for me when I was in high school that I struggled at. And if that, if that teacher will communicate with the guidance department, there's a possibility of that unit being corrected, you know, if the grade brought up from that unit to prevent that student from getting in a, in a worse condition.
Does the classroom teacher redo that unit with the student or is it done by someone else?
It's, it's done by edgenuity. So if you're teaching an English class and this unit needs to be recovered, you would contact the guidance, which would probably then refer over to Robin Livingston. You, as the teacher, would communicate and say, this was the content. I need a unit made to recover that for this child. And then that child could, could take, could do that on their own in edgenuity. Am I right? Maybe in a DECR lab or at after-school?
They could do that in after-school. And what happens with that is, there's also, so that unit may be built and you're going into that unit, but there's also a live teacher on that unit. So it will be a video that they will watch. And then they have to work through the content that they missed to recover that credit. And once that score goes in, we let the teacher know. And that helps, that helps that student at that very moment after they fail Chapter Five versus wait until Chapter 20. They can go as they go, so.
Nice program.
But our teachers, our teachers are, now this is high school teachers, but I, I'm impressed with how, I'm impressed with this process, let's put it that way.
We have great teachers.
New to me, but I'm impressed with this process and, and I'm thankful that we had it. Very thankful we had it. If we didn't have this and these students all failed, things would look a lot different. I'll take that along with the other. So I'm thankful we have the processes we did. But now, Mr. Stones, after I answer you about pre-pandemic. Ms. Trent, would there, do we have that data from pre that we could?
I don't, but I can, I can get that data for you.
I, I wouldn't, I, I don't think it's necessary to get that. I, I just wondered if you had a, you know, if you could just tell us basically your knowledge base.
I mean, I think pre, I think, I think they're bouncing back from the pandemic. Prior to, I think that the report, I think that in the past, the report has been a little higher numbers. So I think, I think that we're doing better right now than, than ever.
For my limited time, last year, I was very, very concerned, last school year. I mean, when I would get the stack of papers, I would sweat it as I read through them. But keep in mind, I come from an elementary setting where, where we stayed on a child, on a child until. But I had, it changed my mindset a lot. But when I saw that there was as many students failing, this year, there, there's not as many. Which drills me, makes me feel so less, a bunch of whiskers.
And, and just to clarify, when, when we're talking about failing, we're not talking about failing like completely grave. We're talking about a class.
A, a class, that's true. Good point, good point.
Yes, just a class.
At, at the end of the semester, at the end of the semester, you know, it's the first time that you could come up with a list like this.
Yes.
To see because what child hasn't passed a course.
Correct.
As I was looking at this one page, this has to have something to do with your attendance. You just didn't fail art, you know?
I asked Cooper, who fails art? Ricky Dodson did. And you know how to email Mike. He made it do.
It has to have to do with attendance. They, they have to fail.
I think they just didn't turn anything.
No, that's correct.
There are some students that have, have difficulties of various kinds.
It does.
You're right. There, there shouldn't be very many failing students. I mean, you're right.
Spanish is probably the hardest. There's only one, one down here. Art, one, eight. Well, this will be four.
Ms. Trent, this is too good of a chance for us to explain this one next thing. If, if a student is not passing a certain course, we, we have, I have met and talked with the high school a lot and about communication with parents. I, I believe the high school parents still want to know.
Absolutely.
Students are, are getting older and they're maturing and they're, they're a little more on their own and have a little more independence. But the high school students, the, the parents still want to know how things are going. And, and I think our teachers are doing a, a much better job also at communicating with parents to let them know that your child's failing art or whatever it may be. And, and then our faculty is doing a really good job at documenting and keeping up with, when we contact that parent, first of all, the high school, contact the student. Make, they'll make sure that they're fully, fully aware of what options they have.
Yes.
And then you contact the parent and you're documenting all this so that, so that we're covering ourselves to show that we contacted you all together, from the teacher and their administration. We contacted you seven times, eight times. So I don't feel near as bad if, if a child has not passed a course. If we tried and tried and tried to communicate as opposed to not send them the case. And I apologize for talking, this is a good, this is a good subject, though.
Any other questions on credit recovery? Real quick update on the building. Last couple of weeks, I've talked to Mr. Mosley, texted him. So SER two, the funding we had for SER two, that all should be done or in the process of being done. We've got till June of this year to finish that. But although he's been with Rackley Roofing, the last HVAC, so all that's done. He's actually starting on SER three now, which will be the Allen's LMS roof and all the HVAC replacements at those two schools. So he's working on getting the bids for that, talking to Rackley about the roof. So that'll start SER three. We've got to June 2024 to spend the SER three on that one. Then next Friday, the 20th, at 11 o'clock, I got a meeting with architects about the building program stuff that we said from our visits that we were going to turn over to the architect, as well as Ms. Riddle. She got the CTE grant approved for the CTE building at the high school. So we're going to talk to them and kind of start working on that, which will be two separate entities within itself. But we got that meeting next Friday, the 20th, at 11 o'clock here to discuss those. So as we get closer and get a dollar amount back in our building program, then we'll kind of take the next steps there. Then the last thing I got is a reminder of the scholarship money from last year. This is just for the board members that was here last year, not the new ones. Just make sure you give a crystal and check, make sure you pay that or not. So that's all I've got. So I'm going to go around. You got anything?
Yeah.
Allen's Roof?
Yes, I'd ask Dr. Holman for last meeting. We used to have an assistant superintendent, and we still have that money. I think it was $5,000 that he could, he could appoint one with. I'd just like to see us do that, so he's out of town. I hope he's never sick. If he's out, the school system, then everybody would know who'd be in charge if he was out. I hope he's never out of his sickness, but if he got dainty, needs to use and be on trips and stuff, or if he's gone on a school trip, I'd just like to be, him and, his choice here if he wants to do that, fulfill that position.
Before we get too far into that, do we have an organizational charter?
We used to do it.
Yeah, I think that, I think that would be a starting point. I think that was something that we'd need to address first. Because we have, we probably have positions we've never had, personnel, that type of thing. I think that would be a good starting point on actual structure.
What did he say, Mike? We didn't hear what he said.
He said, he thinks that we have an organizational charter. That would kind of chain the command and kind of be a good place to start with that.
Because I, I don't know that, I, I don't know how many years it's been since that's been updated, reorganized, however you like to call it.
It's been quite a few years, Charlie. It's been, it's been eight years, Paul. They used to be.
Any other questions on that?
We do have two meetings coming up. I think Ricky Dodson, maybe, and possibly Shirley Myers will be going to February 2nd, the Board's role in school finance, and that is going to be held in Knoxville. If anybody wants to go with them, let me know and I'll get you registered as well. So that's February 2nd. And then also, there is, that's on a Thursday. By the way, everybody usually likes to know the day, so that's on a Thursday. School finance, very good, that's a very good session. And then there is one more that is coming up in February, which is, was the Day on the Hill. And I think they've kind of changed the name on that, so y'all will remember it as the Day on the Hill. But it's now the TSBA Legislative and Legal Institute. So that'll be February 16th and 17th, and that's on a Thursday and Friday. If anybody wants to go to that, let me know and I'll get you registered for that.
When is that?
Uh, February 16th and 17th. So it's on a Thursday and it's on a Thursday and Friday as well.
That's Day on the Hill.
Yeah, yeah, the old Day on the Hill. It's now Legislative and Legal Institute. And then, Mike is passing out now, so this is from the internal schools audit. We just got those back this week from Tamara Beckman's office, which is our accountants that audit the schools. Now, this is the school's only, not necessarily the board and everything through here. And they were very good, I will say. There was only the one that was segregation of students, which is unusual.
Jeremy, do you have anything else?
Mitch? You know, I just thought, if they do comment and explain in, in detail.
William? I'd like to thank Mr. Tyler, County Commissioner. Appreciate you coming.
All right. Ms. Trent and Dr. Nibbins, thank you so much for this.
James K. Douglas is winning right now. Forty-one to thirty-six. Forty-one to thirty-seven. Forty-four, thirty-seven.
Thank you, Al.
I would also like to thank all the students at the schools for such an excellent job with their auditing. They did a great job, wonderful job.
Ms. Nibbitt, before you leave, I have a question.
I'll come down there.
Just the lady, he wanted to-